All right, good evening. Six thirty. I'm gonna call the order meeting number eighteen sixty-two of East Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. We're located in John Daly Meeting Room of the Town Hall and on the Zoom platform. We have a quorum. We have three regular members plus one alternate. So Frank, I would ask you to sit down and lead the discussion to voting tonight. Okay, thank you. Do we have any added agenda items? There was no legal notice. So that moves us right to our public participation portion of the meeting. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak on a topic that is not on tonight's agenda?
Hi, my name is Maria Sutti. I live at Hen Rice Road in Barburg. Um, I'm here today to speak on behalf of myself and I'm sure ninety other residents in town regarding the zoning regulation section four oh four and guarding recreational vehicles. On October twenty-seventh, complaint was filed with a zoning and wetlands complaint form regarding my travel trailer in my driveway for an extended period of time and within too close to the property line. Was not too close to the property line. The travel trailer was in my driveway, but it's twenty-five and a half feet away from the fence line to my neighbor on the side. My house happens to be set back off the road. If you turn into this driveway, my house is over there. Um, my neighbors to the left and right, their backyard is my front yard. Um, so and across my driveway, there's no houses sold. It's not visible to anybody unless you look down my driveway. The individual that filed the complaints had his in his front yard also, which I personally don't feel it's a problem. That's why I'm here today. A lot of us have campers. We park them in our yard because you have to plug them in in order to move them out. I camp all summer long. My vehicle has been in my driveway. This one's been in my driveway for seven years. The previous one was in my driveway for five years, and we keep if I'm going back at a different type of motor vehicles I have. So I'm asking tonight if this board or the zoning and wetlands officer in planning and zoning people take a look at that ruling and do something to correct it, not just for me, but for everybody that has that. There's some people that have campers that are parked on the side of the house, but they have a small yard, so it's not the camper that was moved the other day. I took a picture of it just for tonight's sake, not to criticize or pick, but to use it as an example. It was moved to an empty field next to the individual's home, but yet it was parked closer to the front of the house than the rear of the house, if I read the thing correctly, but it's in the middle of the field. I don't see where that's a problem, although it doesn't quite match the regulations. So if you want to see the picture, I'll be more than happy to show it to you later. My vehicle has been moved appropriately once I received the letter from the town. And I'm bringing it up here also today because there was some stuff stated online, not that I care about the online, but people do read it that there has been no favoritism shown at all because this was clearly marked to select women of East Windsor when it was filed. So I followed now that I realized the issue. It's been moved to my backyard. But in the summertime, my concern is for those of us that go out camping on a regular basis, you go out for the weekend, you bring your camper back, you put it back in your yard, you plug it in, you empty it out, and you restock it. My camper is going to be in my front yard Monday through Friday for most of the summer. So if somebody doesn't go by my house on the weekend and they come in my yard on Monday, they're going to say my camper has been there for seven days, which is against the regulations, but it's really not. So enough said, but if you could please take a look at that zoning regulation and see what you can do to fix that or I believe the individual said there's ninety other campers in the town. That's problematic. You could do something for all of us to include some complaining. That would be great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone online that'd like to speak on a topic that's not on tonight's agenda? Moving on to approval of minutes, the meeting eighteen sixty-one that was held on October twenty-fourth. We do not have enough members here tonight to vote on this that were present at that meeting. So I will entertain a motion to postpone the vote on the approval of minutes to our next meeting.
I make a motion that we approve regular meeting minutes. Hold on, hold on, regular meetings, number eighteen sixty-one, Tuesday, October twenty-four, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, there is a motion to postpone the approval of minutes till our next meeting. Do we have a second? Stacy, any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then postpone it till we go on next meeting. Hey, receipt of applications. We received three this meeting. There's PZ twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight for one twenty-two Prospect Hill Road, especially use permit requesting a special use permit for a commercial multipurpose assembly space that will provide a venue for corporate and private events for serving of alcohol located on map one twelve, block seventeen, lot zero zero one dash zero zero one. It's in the B two zone. The applicant owner is Cad Lentry Event Venues LLC and Sophia's Plaza LLC. Second application is PZ twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine, one oh nine South Main Street. A site plan review requesting change of use to retail sales of firearms and ammunition located on map fifty-two, block twenty, lot sixty-two, zone in the TZ five. The applicant owner is Edward Markowski, Jr. And we've got PZ twenty twenty-three dash thirty for one fifty-five Main Street, especially use permit requesting a special use permit for a change of use from convenience store to liquor store on map eighty-eight, block forty-seven, lot zero one one. And key one zone, the applicant is Kaiser, Kaiser Yasus. I hope I didn't butcher that too badly. Performance bonds, we have none. No, under continued public hearing. We have PZ twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three. The town of East Windsor is requesting a text amendment to create a new section Warehouse Point Design District within the East Windsor zoning regulations. Okay, so we have had this previously on our agenda. We have seen the modifications to the verbiage. We kind of, we've had it for a couple of meetings now, hoping to get some public input or participation, which we really have not. So what's the, what's the commission's opinion? Do you want to leave it open any longer to request or to allow public participation, or you feel that no news is good news and people don't have any objection to this and we can close it and whatnot? I'd like to close it. Hold on. What's your opinion, Stacy? It's been two meetings so far, so.
Over thirty days? Did I just make sure that you asked who's here?
Sure, is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on this application, Bob? And anyone online that would like to comment on this application? Oh. I'm, I'm satisfied that we did due diligence to try to allow enough public participation to this, so I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion because of close of public hearing. Town of East Windsor requesting a text amendment to create a new section Warehouse Point Design District WPDD within East Windsor zoning regulation.
There's a motion on the table to close the public hearing. Do we have a second? Any further discussion?
I just had a couple of quick changes that I wanted to make. Number five, we just changed.
Yeah, so just reference that, making just the motion can be as so they don't, no, right now.
Okay, so I have a couple of things that I picked up in the draft regulation. As we intended, the second page, five oh seven point three, initially to have three zones, the core and the transitions. Or maybe that's written correctly, because all for every transition and for every, is that to be the same zone?
No, we had developed that not knowing where we would land, so.
We just have two zones, four and transition. And then on the next page, under the minimum parking requirements, we just changed our parking requirements to meet the state housing regulations, and we changed the residential to one space per unit, so I want to make sure we're aligned with that, so we put it one instead of one and a half. Then the last the last change I thought is on the next page on the bulk area requirements. I had, it goes note one, two, three, and then three again. Change that to four. Okay, no, that's just a one. Yeah, and that's it. Just a couple of.
The notes here, just all. And I just, and I just, I'll hold for thirty seconds. What I would like to do is just for the purposes of record and nothing else, can I just spend thirty seconds and show them what we have on the website so they can see where it is and where we've been?
Yes.
Does that, I think, may partially lie to people ahead? Never anybody watches the recording?
And I can add, I, I I, I don't want to say sped watch, but I speed watched the four videos today. And this document is in alignment, but you know, that I can resolve that story.
Yeah, sorry. I just wanted so I just want to show you quickly what we have on the website. So we we did the legal notice, but we offered the press releases, went into the most recent by Village Voice, which is why we kept it up the last time. So within that, we included a QR code that'll bring people to the website. So we created this page, you know, eastwindsorct.com slash WHPS. So we have sort of the context, some of the graphic, and this was part of the update that we did just to kind of show in a concise way what we've done. So starting with the identifying kind of where we wanted to go after the initial identification of just the overall plan for the area way back and some of the opportunities and what we wanted to achieve. Then we went through the process with the Warehouse Point Planning Study, which was completed in twenty twenty-one, which looked at the blue ditch and some of the uses and historic buildings, et cetera. And so kind of where we are now is step four, which is the zoning record updates to try to take all of the recommendations from the planning study and distill it down into something that is going to implement without creating additional complication. So we've got that up there. We've got the draft regs, which are in front of you, have been linked, also the proposed zoning map, which show the core area, transition area. We've got the links to the videos that were created by Terry when we did the initial outreach and then all the reports. So there were the final report, all of the maps with all of the drainage information, existing uses, ownership information, all of those things which came out. So it's all here. We can't through the town website really track the activity on this page, but everything that we've done leading up to this, we've sort of been sending people here. So this information is available and has been for several months now. We've been updating it as we go along. So if folks are interested in trying to engage with what we're doing, that is available. So just wanted at least, you know, make everybody aware that we, we have tried to get this out as many people as possible. Any other discussion? Okay, so here we go. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Hearing is closed. So now we have a motion for the exchange. I'll entertain a motion to approve the text change.
I'll make a motion to approve the text amendment to create a new section five oh seven Warehouse Point Design District WPDD within the East Windsor zoning regulations as detailed in the application PZ twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three of the town of East Windsor and revised during the hearing held on eleven four twenty-three. Finding that the new section is keeping with the East Windsor Planner Conservation and Development and the final report prepared by LA Blow Lab dot PC, Land Planners, entitled Planning for Stormwater Management and Village Redevelopment in Wills Town of East Windsor, then it gets dated January twenty-first, twenty twenty-one with the the change, right? Changes on five oh seven point three, taking off transition. For a break, taking off for a break. Name number two. And let's call that. See minimum parking requirements. From residential from one point five space per unit to one space. And the final change is just a typo on for bulk area requirements on the notes, note three listed twice, so note note three should be note four.
There's a motion to approve the text amendment change. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Second, by Stacy. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Your names. Hey. Next item on our agenda is the continued public hearing of PZ twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five for seventy-five Newbury Road and Nine Craft Road, for special use permit, construction of a thirty-two thousand two hundred and twelve square foot building and a sixteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-three foot square building with new paved parking, loading areas, sec landing, concrete blocks, stormwater management system, associated utilities and landscaping located on map ninety-three, block nineteen, lot zero six and zero nine, zero ten. In the end one zone, the applicant owner is Penske Trucking, we see CO LP, Newbury Road Enterprises LLC. The applicant has requested for an extension to be continued until our next meeting on November twenty-eighth. So I will entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on PZ twenty, I believe, Jan twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing on seventy-four Newbury Road and Nine Craft Road.
There's a motion to continue PZ twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five till our next meeting. Do we have a second?
I'll take it.
Second by Stacy. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, continue to our next meeting. We have no new public hearings. There's no old business. New business, we have PZ twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven, fifty-two Main Street, modification of the food site plan for parking spots located at fifty-two Main Street, map sixty-one, block five, lot forty-one. The zone is a TZ five. The applicant is Danielle. Quite, quite dear. We're going to speak on this application.
I don't know that there's anyone here to speak on it. Danielle did hear from the applicant today. He's been out of the country. She's been trying to get in touch with the applicant and his land surveyors to put some changes on the plan as a result of the review from town engineer. The fire marshal. And the changes have not been made.
Okay.
And the staff memo that's attached prepared by the system down planner, has a motion to continue to the meeting. This is a result of the car, but obviously.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to continue this. This is our meeting on the twenty-eighth.
I'll make a motion to continue to November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Oh, PZ. Yeah, yeah, PZT twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven.
Hey, there is a motion to continue PZ twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven till our next meeting. Do we have a second? Second by Stacy. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, continue to our next meeting. Now I understand why you say next meeting is going to be busy. Okay, next item is under other business, our CEO report.
We started the second page. The application that suggests continuing to the next meeting. It's on there. Again, result of the sweep. Have West River Farms. We've been monitoring first adherence to sedimentation or water control for heavy rains. We'll continue, we can range to monitor that. And we heard from their owner that they're going to hire someone to do a study, much to see if there's something else they can do there. The yellows, as you know, Danielle's code for it came in and went and it got resolved. That we are monitoring one twenty-four Newberry to be sure they're using compliant. There's, you probably noticed trailers in Walmart parking lot.
Sorry, I thought that may have been there with their application to expand while they had.
Well, I think it's seasonal stock.
Application way over, way past the year, right?
Yeah, the, the, the one for expanding their grocery pickup area.
They were complaining a number of issues. Danielle's followed up the back and proposed that. We have a pending issue on one of the mobile homes up on North Road. They put on a deck without a permit and we go at least closest, it needs to be fifteen feet from the next trailer and it's closer. There's the owners having a survey. Kind of corrected by that.
Well, I see a lot of complaints by a certain individual, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
I don't know if it adds up to ninety, but this, this individual didn't make very good. Wanted to make it.
No, no, there's the.
He did his own sweep.
Yeah. During, during elections, like.
Yeah, so Danielle addressed those matters and we take the news comments. Review the regulations.
Letting go, which is, which is good.
Yeah, and I just want to add a couple of things. Two ninety-seven North Road, the season resistance order, I received the as built for that property that show yeah, it's, yeah, the film, it shows the overfill area and the sampling grid that they used to do test bits and assess what had been buried there. It shows the location where they had to remove material that was above the cleanup standards for groundwater. And they had to do confirmatory sampling, so they need a little more time on the disposal profile, and that material is going to be landfill cover developed. I think they said ninety-two hundred cubic yards. It'll go off Manchester landfill, there's landfill cover, but it's currently under review with town, man, Manchester. So they're waiting for the okay and then ship it off site right now. It's it, they excavated it, they've isolated it into trailers with covers, and then there's a small amount that's on plastic covered as well. And then they'll come before you and present. They also submitted a report that details everything they did, so the analytical attach. The side sweep, Danielle and I went to the field observation field trip this week that noted thirty violations. And so she's cut on it, she's like, well, they, they to get letters moving and well, sixteen, she's arranged for fourteen sixteen, yeah. All the businesses, because she wanted to do a blank sweep and just blindly tell everyone we were coming, give them an opportunity to come forward. Yeah, and some did. Some of the car dealerships took their flags in and, you know, so. So I would say North Road looked pretty, pretty good. Yeah.
Any any news on the waiting ordinances? Are they coming for it?
You mean like for Blake?
Yeah.
We haven't gone back to the drawing board on that since the town meeting when it got voted down.
So it hasn't been looked into since then?
Since it got voted down? No.
That was going to be my question. So these things that are on the ZVO report that are likely, are we going to continue to carry them or at this point are we going to table them until they?
Pulled a bunch out and have the blight list going.
It seems to me that if a lot of complaints or ZVO reported in the ordinance and it hasn't been looked into, we might as well have that category.
Yeah, we'll, we'll track them separately. We'll clean that up. We already started to do it separately, but there's some remnants.
Are we coming to review this? We've seen lots of progress. It's good. Good job, though. Good job. Under correspondence, we have Robinson and Cole, eleven Chaney Road, Horizon Wireless, notice of a certificate. Notice of a certificate of environmental compatibility and public need for the construction, maintenance. And operation of a wireless telecommunications facility.
So this is, um, down by Nutrien, you know, the, the, it's a replacement structure for those antenna that are on the water tower now. They were looking to upgrade the facility and that the engineers for Verizon, um, found the water tower not being. Good enough shape to handle that, so they. Uh, are relocating and putting up, but it's on the same parcel, putting in the tower up. Uh, and they have formally submitted to the siding council. Um, I have copies of the full report, you can also see it, you can also see it, uh, online. In it, you'll see, uh. Renderings for a visual impact. And, uh. There's the standard environmental assessment required by the, the siding council. Neighbors have been noticed.
So we can't make them, make it look like a tree.
We could ask. If we, if, you know, anyone can sign up, uh. To speak at the public hearings, they have a, a, a portal or that you can register to give public comments as an individual. Or if you have standing, you could get intervenor status and. You know, uh, you have the opportunity to speak and you have an attorney across. Which now that, from examine, the applicants and ask questions that may not have been asked. Initially by the commission, um, was siding council.
So these, yeah, these are basically just an informational.
It's a notice, um, and but there is an avenue to comment, should the commission want to comment on it. And then if the public to, um, who said, desire to comment. There's an opportunity to do that.
Anybody have anything that we wanna put on the record about this? I, I just, do you know, are they, the existing tower staying or?
As I read the, um, you mean the water tower?
Yeah.
As I read through.
They're removing everything off it.
They're taking it.
But not a third of that, but the tower will still remain.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. They're gonna transfer everything over to the new structure. Maybe we'll have any other questions on that? Hey. So for business meeting, we have a draft plan of conservation and development project timeline.
So with this timeline, um, that might pull together, we have the overarching. Milestones that we want to achieve, we just numbered it in the months, not knowing exactly when we'll start, we're hoping to start in January. But we're thinking the blocks of time, once we get started. We can label those, those months appropriately. So it goes out right here and, um. Starts off with kind of a workshop kickoff, visioning meeting. And then, um. Goes straight down the line there. We just wanted to put it before you, the.
Opening preliminary steps.
Preliminary steps.
Doing the P O C D.
There will have new, new topics that take more space, like solar, you know.
I do actually have a few notes that I. Read of it based on some of the things that were brought up. Through different, through the public hearings and the siding council meetings.
I was, um, speaking with the first elect one earlier today, he, in talking with the attorney who represented the town, um. On the most recent application, said that the siding council did put in some conditions that. The town, you know, to address town concerns. Like brownwater monitoring. I, I'd have to look to see the other ones, but there was a couple big ones, noise, those are, yeah.
Let me ask that question too, okay, did you make the one?
Yeah, let me ask.
So, um. We'll keep plugging at that, you know. But for the. Looking for January. To get that started.
So do you, uh, do you think we're gonna have every month something on our agendas addressing this?
Yeah.
Okay. I think the way that it's set up.
There's workshops every month.
It's like a commission check-in.
Commission workshop. We have it every month and then twice around the last.
So whether it's a, you know, the, the type of. Why it hits the agenda or what it hits the form might be different, but that way there. It, uh, will sort of be a regular interval. Whatever point of process.
Looks like every other month until the end.
Yes, some stuff, there may not be, you know, there may be a community meeting, we may have a survey going or a listening session, whatever it is. But it'll sort of show up on the commission agenda based upon that. Um. I see you included also a copy of the Connecticut Federation of Zoning.
Yeah.
Agency quarterly newsletter. Anything particularly you want to bring to our attention on that, or is it still?
They're reading, like.
Excellent. Hey. You, you might have a new come executive session, is there? Anything else, honey, the commissioners want to discuss? Not all, and a term motion to adjourn. I make a motion, we adjourn. The motion on the table to adjourn, we have a second? Second by Stacy, any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at seven oh seven.